A few. Started. If you would like to speak for public comment, please sign the sheet now. Once the clerk takes the clipboard, there will be no further sign up for public comment. Good afternoon. We're going to call to order the 247 session of the 10th council, August 5, 2021, at 12:00 PM at the Bowen Center, 52 Bagley Street, Pontiac, Michigan, invocation by Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke.
Before everyone that came out today, we ask the special persons for this council that we will do what the citizens want us to do, that we most of all, that we will do the right things for the city. And I pray for everyone that is here in Jesus' name.
Oco.
Carter. Miller. Idella. Stramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams. President, you have a form.
I need a motion to excuse pro temp Carter and Councilwoman Idella. Seeing none, roll call.
Miller. Stramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams. Five years, no names.
Okay. Is there any amendments to the agenda? Amendments to the agenda.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, place on the resolutions and the, um, submission from our city attorney as it relates to validating issues.
Uh, where, where did you want to add that?
At the top of the, at the top of the deck, get it over with.
Can we add that, uh, as, uh, 2A? So under, after the subcommittee report. Okay. Is there a motion? Is the move in support of any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Stramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Also, Mr. President, I'm sorry, uh, we, oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, motion passes. All right, Councilwoman Waterman.
Also, as it relates to the resolutions as it pertains to healthcare item number 16 has not come before the retirement, I'm asking that, uh, that be taken off, um, as well.
Okay, is there a move? Is there support? Okay. I take the support from Stramsky. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, um, roll call.
Stramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes, yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller. Five years.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now I need a motion to approve as amended. All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller. Stramsky. Five years.
Okay, which brings us to approval of minutes from July 27, 2021. Is there a motion?
Or.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller. Stramsky. Taylor Burks. Five years.
Okay, so, uh, motion passes, which brings us to item number two, uh, finance report. Councilwoman Waterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would let the minutes reflect as they are in the packet and.
Okay, all right, uh, which brings us to item number 2A, which is the add-on for the, uh, resolutions regarding recreational, uh, medical marijuana initiative petitions. Uh, Mr. Gibbs, are you speaking for the city attorneys? Yeah, Mr. Gibbs? Yeah, he's not recognized at council meetings.
Well, just, I'll do my best council president, but this is a point of order as the, this is a matter of the city legal aspect under the charter. But with that said and noted, um, as stated in the memorandum, there's, um, uh, some serious flaws in the way the ballot initiatives were put together pursuant to section 6.404, uh, dealing with this as a referendum. Mr. Chair. Application. Will adopt it.
Change that. How should?
I'm free.
Gibbs, um, if we can get Mayor Waterman off the telephone, um, because I can't hear what you're saying.
This one's better. So it's also in violation of MCL 168.482. Uh, it requires, uh, the initial petition to be less than 100 words. Uh, the description on this petition specifically exceeds that, and so it would be in violation of law. And so the initial ballot initiative that has been proposed, both as violated by the charter, charter, as well as state law. Uh, the ballot initiative regarding decriminalization of ethnogenic plants, which is commonly known, um, as mushrooms or other, uh, biological plants. Uh, likewise fails because it's defective in the way that it's been drafted significantly. Uh, it's seeking to amend an ordinance in the city of Detroit and references an ordinance from the city of Detroit. And if I'm accurate, I'm sitting in the city of Pontiac and have a contract to provide legal services to you as a city. So, uh, the resolutions that are, uh, attached and are recommended for adoption by this council also are in compliance with both, uh, the enforcement of your charter in this matter, the enforcement of state law, and are, uh, recognizing the defects in both ballot initiatives. And it's the recommendation of, uh, your city attorneys that, uh, the council would consider adoption of both resolutions that are attached to the memo drafted by Attorney Joe.
Our resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the resolutions call for the, uh, the resolutions call for the, uh, city council to direct the clerk not to place the initiatives on the ballot. But procedurally, it's not the clerk that places the items on the ballot. We certify. So we need to actually certify, meaning check to see if there were enough valid signatures. That inform the council if they were or not. And then it's the council that would actually, based upon the charter, that would actually place the issue on the ballot. So we'll have the certification done Tuesday, and we'll inform the council if they met the signature threshold. I'm not speaking to the validity of the, um, proposals at all, just rather they met the signature threshold. And then the council, based on their city attorney's advice, can opt to say that these two particular issues shouldn't, um, you know, should not be placed on the ballot.
Uh, council president, just to speak to that, that the resolutions that are before you are, are simply pointing out the defect under both charter and law. And regardless of whether the signatures or the amount of signatures that have been collected, won't change, um, the legal analysis. And so the fact is, is that your charter and state law prevents both of these ballot, uh, initiatives from moving forward. So it would be within your discretion. Um, I would indicate that, uh, from a legal standpoint, that, that can't change between this meeting and reviewing them Tuesday and bringing them back for another meeting. Um, the legal matter is the legal matter. So it's before you to, uh, to enact the resolutions that would conform to the law, and I would leave it at your discretion to do so.
So, Mr. President, I would just ask that the, uh, resolution therefore then be amended and to remove from the city council directs the interim clerk not to place initiatives. Uh, well, their separate resolution to not place the initiative petition regarding recreational marijuana on the November, November 21 ballot in Valley. I guess you'll take them separately. Just needs to be modified that, you know, city council is not placing.
Okay, where should it be modified, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, in the, uh, the, um, final, um, now therefore be resolved, it says that for the reasons as provided by the city attorney, um, the city council directs the interim city clerk to not place the initiative petition regarding recreational marijuana. Just for the reasons as provided by the city attorney, the city council, uh, is not placing the initiative petition regarding recreational marijuana on the November 2021.
Yeah, council president, if, if the council were inclined to move forward, if they would strike the words directs the interim city clerk from the resolution and add in that, uh, city council, um, does not place the initiative petition regarding the November ballot, that that would suffice under the state law. So you would cross out directs the interim city clerk and add in city council does not place.
Can you read, uh, the first resolution, Mr. Clerk, just to make sure we've got the right language? And then, um, and then we'll have to suspend the rules in order to vote on it today.
I think this is the formal. So, a resolution regarding recreational marijuana initiative petition. Whereas the Pontiac interim city clerk received an initiative petition regarding recreational marijuana on July 26, 2021. And whereas the city attorney has provided an attorney-client privileged memorandum regarding laws applicable to this initial petition, now therefore be resolved that for the reasons as provided by the city attorney, the city council does not place the initiative petition, initiative petition regarding recreational marijuana on the November 2021.
Motion.
Move. Or.
Any. Seeing none, roll call.
Williams. Miller. Idella. Stramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Five years.
Okay, it brings us to the next resolution. What should that language be in this resolution, uh, Attorney Gibbs?
Council president, it would be the same, uh, strike of the language directs the interim city clerk to and adding in city council does not. Uh, and that's in the middle of the be it resolved section. So it'd be identical to the resolution that just passed.
Okay, can you read the res?
Whereas the Pontiac, 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 City Initiative Petition Regarding Decriminalization of Ethnogenic Plant Use and Possession on July 27, 2021. And whereas the city attorney has provided an attorney-client privileged memorandum regarding laws applicable to this initiative, now therefore be resolved that for the reasons as provided by the city attorney, the city council does not place the initiative petition regarding decriminalization of ethneogenic plant use in possession on November, on the November 2021 ballot.
Is there a, there a move?
Move.
We're going to support it. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Miller. Stramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Okay, motion passes, uh, which brings us to item number three, which is Oak Hill Cemetery Discussion. Uh, I know many of us have seen the news story about Oak Hill, which is in Councilwoman Taylor Burke's, Burke's side district. Just wanted to place this on the ballot today to have a discussion about, uh, maybe putting some funds into making sure that gets cleaned up from the city, because it is a city park. So I'll start with Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke, and then, um, Madam Mayor, if you have somebody from, uh, yourself or somebody from administration that wants to speak to it, that would be awesome. Go ahead, Councilwoman Burke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I am very, 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 very upset, uh, about the cemetery over there. Uh, when I, when I first, the first time that I passed, uh, went through there, uh, and saw everything down and everything, I thought that maybe they were cleaning something and that when they finished, they were gonna put everything back together. But, um, I traveled that way most of the times coming this way. And, and it's very, it hurts my heart because I have some friends, loved ones that are very, very, very. And, um, I think that it is terrible that the, that, uh, the city has let this go on as long as it has gone on. It looks horrible. It's embarrassing. And they, and across the street, they got trees and everything still laying in the ground at the cemetery. And I, and you know, you, you want to do everything else, but you should take care of the taxpayers that live here and their families that's gone on. And, and they, they families have to go over there and look at this ugly, raggedy stuff over there and, and that they have paid for. Because burying a loved one is a cheat. And I think that something should be done, and I want to see it done right now. I don't want to hear no excuses. I don't want to know, I think, I thought, I want an answer today that that place is going to be cleaned up and that, that, that everything is going to be fixed over there and then see bye-bye this weekend. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, the DPW director, Al Cooley, is not here. We did both speak to, uh, Channel 2 News when they came out. The trees were damaged by the storm, I understand, and broke some headstones. That our DPW department is working on right now. Um, you can go over there too, but I'll start it off. Um, but we did address this. One of the things that the public should know is that we are steadily putting money into this perpetual care fund for that, um, Oak Hill Cemetery, which is a jewel of the city. Uh, the emergency manager took all the money, $800,000, out of the perpetual federal care fund. So we're taking it out of our general fund to gradually place that as is needed with the help of volunteers. With the help of volunteers, we have restored three of the mausoleums that are of that beautiful cemetery. And we continue to use other funds from our own general fund that our taxpayers pay into on a regular basis. So this is how this Oak Hill Cemetery, which is the love of the city, many historic personnel is buried there, and we are caring for that. Um, Mr. Abdul, Abdul Siddiqui is here to speak on behalf of Al Cooley, who the DPW director, who is responsible for cemetery care. Abdul, would you like to speak?
Yes, so, you know, the storm that came through two weeks ago, um, it left a lot of damage on the, on the city streets. And that was the priority of the city staff, DPW staff, who are also short-staffed right now. And we, we've lost two or three employees recently. And so our top priority was getting, was getting the streets safe, you know, for the public. Um, and then the cemetery, in the meantime, we've had volunteers out there cleaning up. Uh, and we're working on getting quotes from contractors to come in and clean up, because the contractors we have right now are also short-staffed. And so we're getting some additional contractors to come out there and, uh, assist with the rest of the cleanup and repairing the headstones.
I hear what you're saying. It's not the headstones that, that, that I'm talking about. I'm talking about that ugly fence laying down on the ground, been on the ground since we had the storm. And, and nobody has gone out there to do anything. It looked horrible when you passed by there. And, uh, uh, and, and by now, you know, you could have done something. You could have even picked it up and did something instead of letting it lay out there looking like we don't care and all these people, relatives is laying in that cemetery. You can't tell me nothing.
So the fence would also, the contractor would also be working on the fence, but we, in the meantime, we put up a temporary fence and, right, and, right. So we, we put up a temporary fence. We've got an insurance claim going to, uh, you know, to, to repair that fence as well. So we, we have a claim in with the insurance to, uh,
Understand, and we're, we're working on fixing.
Uh, timeline for these quotes, will you guys be bringing them to council, um, uh, next week or what's, what's the actual timeline to get new contractors, uh, to take care of, uh, what needs to be taken care of?
I think we're, we're expecting the quotes in the next few days, um, any day now, really. It's, um, this is an emergency. I, I, I think if the quotes are over $10,000, uh, we'll bring it to council, but it should be, uh, hopefully we'll have that consideration.
I just looked at a, a pic from the, from Oak Hill. I, I, you know, I'm just off the word. It's just embarrassing. It's not the table's face. But there's a deer over there on the ground. Have you picked the animals up over there yet?
You know, earlier in the week, to let them know there's a dead deer. Here's a deer, by lightning, laying in the middle of the trees and the tombstones, and I advise them that they maybe want to account for that, to get over there and dispose of that deer.
And that, so it's in the cemetery?
Yeah. Has anybody been out there looking there? Nobody's out there. You just told me.
That will be the, uh, we'll, we'll check with the, with the contractors who are running the cemetery. That should be the responsibility to clean up.
And we're going to move on to, uh, we have, back to, so, um, we're going to move on to recognition of elected officials. No, no, if you, if you want to speak as an elected official, you can go to the podium, okay? Um, nobody has taken the podium, so we're going to go to agenda address. Is there any agenda address? Okay, which brings us to item number four, resolution to adopt rules and regulations for the medical marijuana commission. Who's presenting this from administration? Madam Mayor.
The city attorney, uh, represents me on this particular matter. Uh, in this instance, uh, I am directing the city attorney to give that report.
So, uh, Mr. Gibbs, would you like to give that report? Uh, we've passed several resolutions about that particular matter. We've passed several resolutions about that particular matter.
The resolution doesn't change.
It wasn't, it was not vetoed. So, Madam Mayor, I will be looking forward to a memorandum that says that council resolutions are invalid to be sent and published, so we can move forward on that. But this is a council meeting. We've been, we've been the court on who is responsible for council meetings. Anybody from Jamarco Mullins and Horton that wishes to speak and represent as the city attorney, because that is the firm that represents the city, is allowed at the meetings to speak. Attorney Chubb is not allowed to speak at city council meetings. And so we've already been through this for maybe a year and a half. So if you not wish to present on this, we'll move on to item number six.
We do, I am a partner of Jamarco Mullins and Horton, and we have repeatedly talked about.
Okay, we're gonna move to item number six. Item number six. Item number six. Item number six. Okay, notice on marijuana ballot initiatives. Who's presenting?
Mr. President, I put that on the agenda, but you've already addressed that through the, well, you actually skipped over item number five.
Okay, item number five is memorandum on city council adoption of the rules prior to the Medical Marijuana Commission. Approving them would be in violation of ordinance 2357B, City of Pontiac Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance approved by the Pontiac voters. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the ordinance is clear as to how the process is. I actually included a copy of the ordinance in your packet, which caused for the mayor to appoint the four members of the commission into, my knowledge, that has not been done yet. I have not received any appointment letters or asked to swear in any members of the commission. Subsequently, the commission must meet in public, and then the ordinance clearly states the Medical Marijuana Commission shall adopt such rules and regulations as a section 6A as deemed necessary to governance of proceedings and deliberations. The rules and regulations adopted by the Medical Marijuana Commission shall be subject to approval by the council. So it is imperative that the mayor goes on and make her appointments to the commission. We have received, as of to date, three appeals to the commission, but those appeals cannot be heard until the commission is in place. As per the ordinance, the commission is a public body.
Mr. Chair? Yes, I can speak to that. As the clerk said, to his knowledge, what he doesn't have knowledge of is that I have appointed the four members, and that they have signed individually also a document that says that they approved and have reviewed these medical marijuana rules as we have presented them here for council approval. It says nowhere in the referendum that they have to meet, that they have signed individually, each one of those. So to confirm that, I do have, since you won't hear Mr. Chubb, who, and Council President, yes, council resolutions are valid, but so is the city charter. And the city charter says the mayor does appoint the city attorney. But if you don't want to hear from Mr. Chubb, then Mr. Gibbs can also tell the same thing and can also affirm what I have just told you. Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, Council President, members of council, each of the four individuals have been through a thorough orientation session that I've conducted. The clerk is aware that I would be taking the role of being the liaison and advising the members of the commission. That thorough orientation included a background, the complexity of what the anticipated appeals process would be, the law regarding that. Each of them individually were met with, and they signed and acknowledged what proposed and recommended rules would be. And it was presented to you. Part of the procedural aspect is that each of them have expressed is if this council were to adopt those rules, then they would have certainty as to exactly what they are committing themselves to regarding the rules. Because the original referendum was amended, the ordinance was amended on seven different occasions, including at the final meeting when it was adopted, each of those individuals have expressed their support of the rules that have been presented to the council, and the administration is asking that the council adopt those rules so that they can be taken to a publicly noted meeting, and as the adopted city council rules be affirmed by the commission, and the process can start. So that's procedurally where we're at.
Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk, and then Attorney Sharp.
Let me just clarify. First of all, ordinance 2357B has never been amended. What you may be referencing is the zoning ordinance was amended, but the actual ordinance that approved medical marijuana in the city has never been amended. That's 2357. Chad, no, the zoning had no impact on the commission. The ordinance clearly states the commission shall maintain a record, a written record of its proceeding actions, which shall be available for public inspection, showing the actions of the commission and the vote of each member upon each question considered. All meetings of the commission shall be held in conformance with the Open Meetings Act. So the commission cannot approve stuff without conducting a meeting in open. This is exactly what happened in the city of Warren. They conducted meetings in private, and that is why those approvals basically were in all kind of litigation and stuff like that. The commission must, is a public body, must conduct its business in public, and that includes approving the rules. Furthermore, the rules don't even speak to all of the positions that the ordinance, the rules make no reference to there being a secretary either. But the commission must conduct its business in public, and you still haven't heard from the mayor, who are the members of the commission.
Counsel President.
Attorney Sharp, and then I'm gonna let you respond, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you, Counsel.
I just want to make sure, kind of keep this moving. Attorney Sharp?
I agree with the clerk. It's a public body. It has to meet in public, and they need to adopt those rules at a meeting that's open to the public, period.
Gibbs?
Yeah, Counsel, we agree as well. I have not conducted a business meeting of the commission of any kind, simply have recruited and the mayor has appointed four individuals that are ready to serve. What we're asking is that the council would adopt the rules that have been presented so that we can call the initial meeting. The commission can meet in public at a publicly noted meeting, and that those commissioners can affirm that they're operating the appellate process under those rules. So we agree, as soon as we know that the rules are the rules, then the initial meeting would be commenced, and we would get moving forward on it. But, and so we haven't called that initial public meeting because we want to present the rules. We thought it was prudent to offer to this council that those individuals that are willing to serve have reviewed the entire process and are in support of what's being recommended to you. But if you were to change them or to modify them, that's fine. We would take what was adopted then to the first publicly called and scheduled meeting with the commission. So we don't disagree with the clerk. That has to be considered.
So procedurally, Mr. Gibbs, if they are in agreement, why not have a meeting with the four people that the mayor has appointed, and they can vote on the record that they are in agreement to the rules and recommend it to the council, so we will know that they are in support. They may have questions or concerns or change something for the greater good of the city if they're going to serve. So let's take out the fact that we've been at this place for two years. Let's just go forward, have a meeting of the four people that have agreed to sit on the commission, notice that meeting, videotape that meeting, show it to the public of them voting on the rules, and then subsequently, the next week, the council, who meets every week, can then vote on the rules for the commission so we can be in order.
Yeah, the only concern that's been expressed is whether there would be a continued commitment. And recall several weeks ago when I indicated that two prior commissioners had rejected to continue with it. And so we have those four. There's a concern that if the rules were to change substantially, there has been historically conflict between the city attorney's positions and the clerk's office positions when it comes to marijuana. So there is a concern that if we followed that procedure and the rules were changed substantially when they came to council, that we would lose a commitment or two from this process. And so I'm trying to present it in a way that, that they, if these rules are adopted, we know that they're gonna commit themselves to those, but if there's substantive changes, I just don't know, Counsel President, I'm being honest with you. I don't know if they would withdraw, we'd be back to marijuana, trying to find people.
Counsel President?
Mr. President, wait, hold it, hold it. If they've already agreed to the rules, then they shouldn't have a problem just agreeing to them again and just doing it in public. And secondly, if somebody changes their mind, they change their mind. I don't think that, again, if they've already agreed to these rules, all they have to do is just do it again in public, simple.
Counsel Woman Waterman?
That's exactly what I was getting ready to say. And also, why is it so secretive that we don't know who the four people are? Why is it such a secret? I'm just not grasping that. I'm just not understanding what you all are trying to do here. Tell us who the four people are, have the open meeting, and do, if you said that they agree with this, who are we to come back here and say no, unless the clerk? Do you, Mr. Clerk, do you have any problems? Have you read this thing, any problems with what they're talking about?
Well, now, just two issues with the rules. There's no reference to the ordinance caused for a secretary. There's no reference to a secretary in the rules. And then about closed meetings.
Ain't no closed meetings.
Well, closed meetings are in the rules.
Okay, well, those two things need to be gone.
So those are the only two issues with these proposed rules.
All right, that's it for me, Mr. President. I'm in agreement with the clerk, and those are the two things, and we need to know who the four people are and stop all this going around the merry-go-round. Thank you.
I just want to record, Councilwoman Waterman, I am in agreement with you. It looks suspicious when you do this. Why you can't, this is a public body. We are council person, we, our life is to dispose. This is what we do. So let's do this. So you have to wonder why they're not saying who these four people are. What's the problem? Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have to say.
We attempted to have a council retreat about four years ago, and we could not have one because the city attorney at the time told us that we were in violation of the Open Meetings Act at the meeting. And then we subsequently learned that you cannot do around robbing to talk about any votes or any stance on an item of a public body individually, because that's in violation of the Open Meetings Act. And so what was confirmed to us today was you've had four people sign individually, basically in agreement or consensus of this. So just to make sure that the city does not get sued, we should just have the open meeting with the four people, and the individuals should be published, and we can get that done. I don't see why that's such a big problem to meet and adopt the rules.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Madam Mayor?
I can answer the question. One of the question about the four people and the names. I did previously announce, this process has been going on for two and a half years, okay? And I talked about the original people that I chose, and then a couple of them got tired of waiting, so I had to fill it in with a couple more to replace those. And then I did announce the names at one time. But, you know, there was so much council wrangling, and they were questioned and called, and so they have asked me, look, we're gonna do our job. We're gonna sign the conflict of interest. We have reviewed the rules, and we're gonna sign those that we agree with them. But until the council approves the rules, we just don't want to be called out. And in fact, one of the other quit recently because they don't like those undertones of the process that's been going on. There are citizens who want to do their good job, stop shanshersly, and so I will abide, since I appointed them, I will abide by the consideration. I appreciate your suggestion that they additionally meet in public to get the rules, but I will take that back to them, and I will use the advice of the city attorney, and I will respond to your suggestion in kind. But we have, we have complied with the, with the referendum, as the attorney has explained to you. Attorney Sharp, if you have a different opinion than the city opinion, let us state that, and he'll review that.
Attorney Sharp?
Different opinion. Again, it gives me some concern for the mayor to go back and have these discussions with individual members. Again, if they've agreed to accept the position, then they need to meet as a body in, in, in public. I think that this council should set a date to bring this back, to give them enough time to post for their meeting, to have this discussion as a body, and to approve the rules. Thank you.
Is there a move and support to set a date for review of the commission for Tuesday, the seventeenth of August? Has been moved and supported. Any city council discussion? Seeing now, roll call?
Miller. Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Mr. President, what was the date you gave, City Clerk?
August the seventeenth. Okay, that brings us to item number seven, resolution to approve contract between city and Coar T Construction, Inc., for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Sidewalk Improvement Project, in amount of four hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and zero cents. Also questions for Mr. Siddique. Siddique? Go ahead, Councilwoman Miller.
Your notes are in the sidewalk, so are you guys gonna start this immediately, sidewalk project?
Sorry, I.
Are you gonna start, are you gonna start this project immediately?
Yeah, this project will start, so probably next week we'll have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, and then you'll probably start the week after. So, yeah.
Do we have a deadline, maybe when they'll be done, because you know, winter's coming and all like this?
Yeah, and that's why I've been trying to get these contracts approved, because the construction season, season is short now. But, yeah, they, they'll keep working until, until, you know, the weather cooperates, and if they are not able to wrap up, they'll continue in the spring.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Woman Waterman? Okay, is there a move and support? All right. Any discussion? Seeing now, roll call?
Shramsky. Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
Miller.
Yes.
Five aces, one nine.
Okay, motion passes, which brings us to item number eight, resolution to approve contract between the city and Mark Anthony Contracting, Inc., for Vanguard Drive Reconstruction Project, in amount of six hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve?
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Waterman.
Okay, this Vanguard Drive, that's where we have the FedEx at now? And that, Councilwoman Shramsky, you have any concerns as it relates to that?
Oh, they do have another exit, but this also goes to Haven. Those things, I do, did you see the picture taken? It is in really bad shape. You have to do something, do something.
All right, I'm good. Yes, it is. But that was the lowest bid.
That was the lowest bid, yes.
Okay, is there a motion? By Shramsky, supported by Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke. Any discussion? Seeing now, roll call?
Shramsky. Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller. Five aces, one nine.
Okay, which brings us to item number nine, resolution to uncommit the three point two million in general fund committed, fund balance initially committed for the purchase of youth recreation enrichment at eight twenty-five Golf Drive, and to transfer three point two million to the capital improvements committed, fund balance toward leasehold improvements at the Ewatt Center. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Seeing now, motion fails, which brings us to item number ten, which is a resolution to. to approve budget amendment for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, to allocate a total of 3.2 million in the capital improvement fund, um, committed fund to the capital improvement fund account 445-756-69971.00, to be used for restoration of the E-Watt Community Center as youth community center. Is there a motion?
Do you want me to speak to that at all, Mr. President?
Is, is there a motion? Seeing now, motion fails, which brings us to item number 11, which is resolution to approve budget amendment for fiscal year 2021, 2022, to allocate a total of 4.220, uh, for construction and engineering services. Madam Mayor.
I'll start this out and ask Mr. Siddiqui to have time to get to the microphone as well. All right. Uh, what this is, counsel, is that, uh, as of, you know, we had presented in the budget, mayor's recommended budget, all of the road and street projects that we wanted to do, all the repairs that are so badly needed. Uh, and each one of these projects has a cost of engineering, both, uh, physical preparation of the, uh, site design, as well as construction engineering costs. And counsel, uh, you cut out all the money, well, two-thirds of the money, needing to do these engineering services, which means you can't do the road projects. The citizens very badly want these road projects, downstreet projects. In fact, we wish we could have more money to do many more of them. But I have Mr. Siddiqui to also speak to that. In order to do those projects, we have to have the engineers to design them. So please, uh, so if you want these projects done, uh, please, uh, put the money back in the budget. It was well part of the balanced budget, uh, and we're just advising and asking that you do that, otherwise these projects will not go forward. Mr. Siddiqui?
Yeah.
And maybe you can tell them the specific projects that this affects, Mr. Siddiqui.
Right, so, uh, the, the specific projects that this would impact, there, there was 1.8 million that was cut from construction, uh, funds, road construction funds from the major, major road fund. That would impact a multi-mile, multi-road, major road project that we're planning. Um, we're looking at multiple streets throughout the city, including Franklin Boulevard, Franklin Road, Paddock, Pike Street, uh, there's several streets, other streets that we're considering for that project. Obviously, we can only select the ones that would fit the budget, and that project was budgeted for about 2 million, uh, 2.3 million in the capital improvement plan, and so the 1.8 million that, um, was eliminated from the fund would severely reduce the scope of that project. Uh, now, the 1.2 million in the major roads fund that was eliminated, um, from engineering services, that means we only left 20,000 in engineering services, which is insufficient to cover the construction engineering costs or the design costs for really any project. So even though we have construction funds for some of the other projects, uh, such as the Mill Street reconstruction in downtown and so on, we don't have the funds to oversee those projects. Um, because contractors work, but then engineers also oversee their work, and we have to have funds to pay those engineers. Um, either we bring them in-house, or we give it up to the consultants, so.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counselwoman Waterman?
If I might, um, I guess, you know, I'm going to go back to budget time when we asked specifically for you to outline and tell us exactly what these funds were for, instead of just putting them in a line, and you've got $5 million that we don't understand what it's going for. Now, after we do that and take it out, now you want to come and explain to us what it is. So what I'm going to ask, Mr. President, is that this come back to the finance subcommittee, where we can sit down and talk and deliberate and know exactly how these monies are going to be spent.
Uh, I, 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 I can concur with that. Uh, what's the thought of the rest of my colleagues?
I agree, and I do notice that, uh, resolution 12 actually has, uh, they're like, both together.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, uh, is there a motion to, uh, send items number 11 and 12 to the next finance subcommittee? Has been moved and supported. Any city council discussion? Seeing now, roll call?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Miller. Shramsky. Five yeas, no names.
Okay, it brings us to item number, uh, 13, an ordinance to amend the city of Pontiac general employees retirement system to clarify asset distribution upon termination.
I'm going to ask Samantha Copass, attorney from, uh, Miller Canfield, who is representing us in the, uh, first, the application for the restoration of, uh, retiree health benefits to the IRS. And now she asked me to follow up, follow up to make sure, uh, that this, uh, everything is in place to make sure we're moving toward actually being able to implement this restoration of healthcare. October 1st is the date that retirees have been alerted that their healthcare can be restored, if the council and all the other boards concerned with this will move along expeditiously to do their part. So this is your part, counsel, and making sure that we can move toward that October 1st deadline that our retirees have been waiting so anxiously for. Ms. Copass?
Thank you for having me, counsel. Uh, the purpose of this, um, ordinance change, which is just the first reading, is to, um, address the funding for the opt-out payment. If you'll recall, uh, in the settlement agreement, retirees who were covered by that agreement had the right to irrevocably, um, elect to opt out of receiving lifetime retiree health benefits in exchange for a $20,000 payment. Uh, the purpose of this ordinance change is to allow $8 million to be moved to a city account from the excess funding of the GERS for the sole purpose of paying the opt-out, um, elections. And, uh, once, uh, all of the opt-outs have been paid, that money will be redirected into the VIBA. Um, so none of this is going back to the city. It's, uh, being used to meet the obligations of the settlement agreement and the VIBA going forward, but it's to protect the city so that none of the opt-outs payments have to come out of its general funds.
Mr. President, if I might, uh, at our retirement board meeting, the board, um, unanimously, uh, voted to go with this, so I'm going to ask my colleagues to please move forward on this. This is, we have like 270, I think, so far, um, retirees who've opted out, and so we want to be able to give them their money.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, um, this is the first reading, right? So we don't have to vote on these at all today, right?
Counsel President, the next step is I'll publish our ordinance summary, and then you'll be able to take, uh, action next week.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to item number 14, now, resolution to approve the First Amendment to the VIBA, uh, declaratory trust agreement.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, uh, just a point of order on number 11. Uh, doesn't the council have to vote to ask the clerk to publish this? I think that's the motion that needs to be made, if the council wants to move forward.
And number 11 is going to finance.
We're on 13. Yeah, but we're on item number 13, Madam.
Yeah, I, uh, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Clerk, can you, um, clarify, uh, don't you need a council vote to ask you to publish this ordinance?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I think you missed, the council referred items 11 and 12 to finance subcommittee.
No, I'm talking about 13. This is an ordinance that do have to be published. This is the first reading, so, uh, the council needs to ask you to publish this.
You, you referenced 11. You didn't reference 13, and I just stated, it's the first reading, and then I'll publish the ordinance summary. The council does not have to instruct me to publish the ordinance summary. And then I said, next week, they can take official action on vote on the ordinance.
Sometimes you do need a motion to publish. I just was asking clarification. You don't need one? Fine, that answers the question.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're on item number 14, is resolution to approve the First Amendment, uh, to the VIBA declaratory trust agreement.
Yes, thank you, counsel. This relates, um, directly with, uh, item number 13. Um, under the VIBA trust agreement, council is required to weigh in and, um, concur with the amendment, so that's what we're looking to do. And the amendment, uh, does two things. Uh, one, uh, confirms that the termination date from the GERS had been March 31, 2021. It's acknowledging that $8 million will not initially be going into the VIBA, but will instead be going to an opt-out fund, and it requires anything left over in that opt-out fund to be, uh, distributed into the VIBA account.
Okay, um.
Again, Mr. President, I would, I would, this was something that came to our retirement board, and we agreed, so I'm going to ask this council to, again, um, take a break of this.
Okay. All right, is there a move? Has been moved and supported. Uh, any city council discussion? Seeing now, roll call?
Williams.
Yes.
Miller. Shramsky. Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Five yeas, no names.
Okay, resolution to approve the amendment to the retiree group health insurance plan?
So this, so this also relates to the VIBA, and what it's clarifying is that Benesius has been hired as the administrator, and that it will be administering an open enrollment period in the, uh, coming months.
Okay. Uh, Counselwoman Waterman?
Yes, again, Mr. President, I would ask this honorable counsel to vote in a affirmative as it relates to this.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No.
So, is there support? Has been moved and supported. Any city council discussion?
I, I can't hear you, Counselwoman. It's supposed to be, well, the deadline they had before was April, and it's supposed to be October the 1st.
Okay.
It's supposed to be. Yes, ma'am.
One question. Um, they were supposed to get us a resolution in regards to the police and fire-
Right.
-last week, and I don't see that on the agenda. I want to make sure. Seized it, so I want to make sure we're doing everything at the right time before we wrap this up.
Good afternoon, um, Counsel President. That resolution is, um, being submitted for the study session. Uh, have been in communication with the actual, with the police and fire, uh, board, which I, I do serve on, and, um, we expect that resolution is acted on on Tuesday, that we will have that report, uh, by the end of the week. We did receive the GERS, the general employee report that has been forwarded over to council, um, submitted to the clerk, so we, we are, uh, aware and adherent to the timeline needed to get this stuff, uh, processed.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the resolutions we passed today include everybody that needs to be included one way or another, so, okay. Thank you, um, Mr. Carrington. All right, any other question? Uh, it's been moved and supported. We discussed it. Uh, call a question? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Williams.
Yes.
Miller. Shramsky. Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Five yeas, no names.
All right, which brings us, uh, item number 16 was moved, so it brings us to item number 17, uh, resolution to approve, uh, mayor's appointment of Mark Holland as deputy mayor of the city of Pontiac. Madam Mayor?
Yes, I'm here, uh, and, um, Mark Holland, who is known to you as a previous council member as well, citizens of Pontiac, uh, is, um, my appointment as deputy mayor. Uh, he's here to present to you. If you would like to hear that, although I don't know, don't know him. Uh, and he has spoken before this August party several, many times before. Um, someone asked me, did we have an employment agreement? Uh, we did not include it in the packet. Um, we can have that, uh, available for you, um, next week if you need to see that as part of your-
Yeah, yeah. Madam Mayor, my only concern, and Mr. Holland will take the podium, um, but, uh, my only concern, Madam Mayor, is that, uh, the employment agreement does not go past December 31st, uh, 2021. So, so, uh, if you can speak to that, that would be great, while Mr. Holland's taking the podium. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, my question was, does the employment agreement go past December 31st, 2021?
There are a number of terms that are included in the employment agreement, um, but, uh, any, any, any employment, any employment agreement that is generated by, um, the mayor who has a limited term is tied to the term of the mayor serves. So that is, that is, that's just, uh, doesn't have to be stated, it's just, uh, you know.
So, so I just, I just want to see, uh, the agreement, um, but Mr. Holland, um, uh, do want to give you this opportunity to speak. I won't be voting today until we actually see the agreement, um, but, um, uh, go ahead, Mr. Holland, if you'd like to address the council.
Well, you know, I know it's a shock to many of you, uh, that, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? All right, all right. First, we bring greetings, and I know, uh, it's a shock to many of you, uh, that the mayor and I have merged together, uh, to better our city. I am standing here humbly asking for your confirmation for this appointment. Uh, no, my agreement does not go past, uh, the 31st. I will be leaving along, uh, with our honorable mayor come December 31st. Uh, but right now, uh, I am, uh, helping, uh, mayor is teaching, and we are delivering services to this community. I ask that, now that I am on the executive side, that, uh, given the opportunity to, uh, finish some projects within the city. So, uh, if you have any questions, concerns, uh, I have 20 years, uh, plus in banking, with America, so I do understand budgets and contracts. I've been running my own business for the last 30 years, so I understand management, and, uh, the business that I have been running, I found it, so there's leadership. And so, uh, we have been, uh, hitting the ground running. Uh, I don't know if you have been, uh, looking around, around the city, but we have made some, actually some developments in the parks, uh, President Williams. We just put some porta potties, additional, all in Murphy Park, but as Mr. Perry Earl suggested, we put some porta potties in Shirley Park, I guess got delivered today. And so, uh, I do humbly ask that we can put our differences aside and come together and work together as, as a team. Thank you, Madam, uh, I started saying Madam President, I'm still used to Patrice, but thank you, President Williams.
Also, people have questions for Mr. Holland. Okay, um, Mr. Holland, uh, I guess we'll be voting on this next week after we see the agreement, uh, but, uh, I just visited Murphy Park today, and the ladies were very happy that you guys helped fix the leaky roof, uh, that's over there, um, but they do want the porta potties, I guess, moved from the front of the parking lot to another spot, but, uh, uh, thank you for that. All right, um, so it brings us to item number 18, uh, proclamation declaring, uh, World War I Greatest Generation Day.
That is moot now, um, Mr. President, although I will still, it's still in the packet because you have deferred it. Uh, the original date, uh, for this declaration was July the 8th, uh, so that shows you how long it's been deferred now this being. But, uh, this relates to the fact that there was, um, the, uh, originally, the Oakland County Airport was in Pontiac. Uh, Pontiac, some citizens in the past gave it up, but they had a celebration of the fact that in World War II, uh, there were women known as Rosie Derivators, uh, who were symbolic of the women who entered the workforce as our, um, capable and heroic men. Men went out, went out to, um, World War II to defend the democracy in our country. So they did have a celebration out at, uh, Open Airport, and I was there, uh, on behalf of the city. I also had the chance to, uh, see two of the remaining Tuskegee Airmen, who are also honored. We had several Tuskegee Airmen from this area, including Milton Henry, many of you remember as an attorney, as well as, uh, Mayor Coleman Young of Detroit. So these were an esteemed group of, um, of men who served our country, and the Rosie Rivers were the, that era's, um, um, women's equity, because they came out and made the planes and the ammunition, uh, that we needed to sustain the war. So, um, you can join me in just recognizing that. I already recognized on behalf of the city for July 8th that day was celebrated. But thank you for recognizing.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I believe that brings us to public comments. Uh, you have three minutes.
My first person would be Marcus Kelly. Marcus Kelly. Okay, Sean Preston, and on deck is Renee Beckley.
I'll pull my mask down. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and residents of Pontiac. Just wanted to come here today and publicly thank everyone that has supported me and my campaign. Your love, your love and support is greatly appreciated. I want to give a special shout out to Ms. Renee Beckley for being one of the first people to publicly endorse me. I also would like to announce that I'm endorsing Julia.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, can't do it.
All right, cool. But, um, District One, I love y'all. Pontiac, I love y'all. Let's keep moving. Yak town, don't back down.
All right.
What just happened is a great prelude of what I'm about to say. Kermit, this is for you. I'm sorry. I believe you violated the First Amendment when you added that no public comment on candidates in the election. For years, this has been a free form to state issues and concerns, protest, and share facts for public awareness. Um, and not to speak on the candidates, I believe this is wrong, because this is to protect people from candidates who may be controversial and maybe destructive for the city of Pontiac. I'm sorry, I have to announce that the only runner for running for District One is Kermit Green. Okay? Also, it also becomes an issue when the mayor's, it's a very serious issue, who becomes the mayor or sits on our council. Um, if the, if we're saying things that are factual and true, we should be able to allow them to speak, whether it's factual or true at this mic. Also, the information should be known about each candidate who runs for this office. Pontiac is a very troubled city, and things, there are things that are currently known, and things that we do not know there are yet to come. Um, as far as, this is a separate issue, this District One candidate is very controversial because we'll vote on the library board, which I spoke about firing the library. This is a different issue. This is not about candidacy, and that lacks judgment for me. Um, to your opinion, I asked you not to bend, adjust, and change rules just for a friend. In my opinion, all candidates are free game to reveal information, opinions, and have questions. Also have questions about the employment, separate issue, Alexander Rowley's employment here at the city of Pontiac, she was in the Waterman administration. Now, a question, who, uh, wrote, she wrote a glorifying essay about Dr. Waterman on Facebook, saying that she was best mayor Pontiac had. We should be allowed to speak, whatever goes on in Pontiac, because part of Pontiac, we're part of Pontiac. You shouldn't censor us, or tell us you're being, you're going into the First Amendment. We have a right to speak at this mic. You shouldn't adjust. Everybody should know about the person who's running for office, about their background and their character before they vote for them. Uh, we just got over one distress, disastrous administration. Let's start anew in twenty twenty-two with honest government. No more secret boards, no more hiding things from the council, no more one-sidedness and a biased city attorney. No, no, no more outright lies, no more holding things over the council here, no more backdoor dealing, no more late or missing financial reports. Goodbye and good riddance, Dr. Waterman and her staff.
So, I do want to address some things. First of all, the rules were not just changed recently, these rules were changed at the beginning of the year, in January, as council rules, and it was brought to us by the parliamentarian. It was also voted on at an open and public meeting. This is not a unilateral decision that was made by me as council president, but we will not continue to have people coming to the microphone and violating the law, and so the ordinance is there. Attorney Sharp, you can speak to that.
What you said, that the parliamentarian, the C-word, was here, she explained the logic behind it, and the rationale, as well as the law behind it, and council voted on making the change.
Counselwoman Miller?
Okay. Karen Jorgensen is up, and on deck is Perry Earl.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council and the audience. I'm here as Karen Jorgensen at thirty-five North Saginaw, and also with Perry Earl, and we were very fortunate to put together a wonderful group effort this past Saturday. Initially, we had thirty students that are medical students from the Oakland University, and we were able to get a lot more work done, because we actually ended up with sixty students that came, and they had a marvelous time here. We also had four entrepreneurs from Pontiac that helped out, which was Kevin Bell from his cleaning service, and Lazarth from World Electric, John Cantrell, a photographer, and our very favorite friend, Tim Travis, who brought us mulch and all kinds of equipment to work with. We had the assistance of Code Enforcement. They were there all day with us, Christopher and Hector Vern was very, um, wonderful in helping us getting some supplies and things from, he's a planning director, Coleman Yocum brought tools for us to work with, and Al from DPW, our new director orchestrated the dumpsters. We were able to cover a lot more ground originally, we thought we were just going to be able to do the pavilion at the library and the library grounds, but we were able to take our project all the way down Saginaw Street. We addressed Hidden River Park, the Yellow Park, PDBA Park, and then we had a wonderful celebration at the Fillmore Thirteen Brewery, and Lee, the owner, donated a bunch of extra pizzas, because a number of the students were starting school the next day on a Sunday. So they definitely want to come back, and they will be here again on August twenty-eighth and September eleventh, and we're kind of hoping that this would be a great initiative for the rest of us to pull together and continue to make our city look beautiful. And Perry wanted to show a photo of our sixty-plus group.
So this is the diverse group that came. Yeah, this is the diverse group that came out, these kids, these kids were very excited to come downtown Pontiac, they have never been. All of these kids are pre-med students, sixty of them from Oakland University, like Karen stated. They will be back August twenty-eighth and September eleventh from nine AM to one PM downtown Pontiac, and those dates are August twenty-eighth, September eleventh, nine AM to one PM downtown Pontiac, and all we're trying to do, trying to do is really pretty much, pretty much just beautify, beautify the downtown area from the library all the way down to the courthouse. That's all. Thank you.
That concludes public comments, which brings us to closing comments. Madam Mayor?
I'd like to speak to some of the things that are coming up in the near future here, and there's a lot of things going on. I think the sixty medical students, as well as you, Perry Earl, and every time, and Karen Jorgensen for organizing that cleanup effort. We've pinned so much, I want to make sure the city does give them a thank you. I think that's part of the Oakland University Pontiac Partnership, which is one of the wonderful things, projects that we have going on in the city. So I do thank you for that. I do want to coordinate with you on that August twenty-eighth date, that's the same day that we've announced that we plan to, our own Isaiah Jackson, who is going to the NBA, that's the same day we plan to have a parade. We're going to be announcing that for anybody who wants to use that calavacade, but I just want to make sure we don't run into two different projects, want to make sure, want to make sure that's coordinated, so come talk to me, because we will be wanting to make sure that that calavacade is able to move into the downtown area as well. And I'm going to not dwell on any one topic here, but we have a lot of legacy projects that are transforming Pontiac, and we're going to be talking about those on the series I call Conversations with the Mayor. That's a webinar, and it's on the second Wednesday, this is coming up August the eleventh at one PM, and this will be on YouTube, the city's cable channel, Facebook Live as well. But some of the legacy projects that we are proud to be, uh, helped in administration with during these terms are, number one, we're still going to have those town halls for citizen input about how they should spend, the state should spend that thirty-seven-point-seven million in American Rescue Plan funding, that's one thing we'll talk about. Also, the fact that the Pontiac has achieved financial stability, which is so important, not just for now, but into future generations. We've gone from a huge deficit and hemorrhaging money eight years ago to now we've got a surplus with our third year of annual GFOA awards. We're working on a state-of-the-art youth center, and we'll talk more about that, including there's a group that wants to present the plan, plan to restore the Ewell Center for Youth Recreation and Enrichment. We also, as we see, are continuing to try to implement Medical Miracle One in the city, and we want to bring the economic development and community benefits that that is going to bring to the city. We have finalized the Phoenix Center deal, and we want to discuss the benefits of the operating plan and the MOU for the public-private partnership, which includes such things as revenue sharing that we're bringing to the city, which includes the fact that the operators of the garage are also responsible for the twenty million dollars of repairs it will take to get that garage up and loaded, as well as to operate the amphitheater. Many of you have been asking me, when is amphitheater going to be ready for regular use? And I'm saying we're pushing the people we're doing the public-private partnership with to outline a definite plan for that. And another of the legacy projects that we are in the midst of is the Woodward Loop Conversion, which has been approved by MDOT, and they put that on their funding cycle. And then there'll be other topics.
That's your time, that's your time, Madam Mayor. That's your time. That's your time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to thank all the voters who came out in the election on Tuesday. Voter turnout was slightly up. Five thousand eight hundred and seventy-four voters, five thousand eight hundred and seventy-four voters actually participated in Tuesday's election. I also want to thank my entire staff for all the additional hours that they've put in, in particular, Ms. Williams, who serves as our elections administrator, and Ms. Castro, who is the election, elections clerk specialist. Normally after the election, we have to go to the county to canvas. I did report in November that we resolved all of our issues at the canvas, but this time, we don't even have to go to the canvas. And I think that really has to do with bringing a professional trainer in as a part of the staff, who continue to work to improve our election system, so I just definitely want to shout out to my entire staff, but those two people in particular, who kind of oversee the elections division. Thank you.
Attorney Sharp?
Thank you.
Counselwoman Schramsky?
Yeah, I wanted to thank everybody who ran and everybody who voted, and I had one of your workers, Mayor Waterman, trying to recruit me for line dancing, because now everybody knows Counselwoman Schramsky never turns off her music, not ever, so I was out there with my music on all day, and you can see that I'm very sunburned, but Coleman Yocum has a much worse sunburn than I do. I think that's about all I want to say. There indeed is a dead deer in the middle of Oak Hill, because even though that's not my district, a lot of my residents volunteer at Oak Hill, and I did call about that, and I, that really saddens me. I, I know that the living home burst from the storm damage, but I really wish they would do something about that. Good afternoon.
Counselwoman Miller?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be brief. I, I just want to address GFL, Mrs., I, no, you, you at the podium, and I'm sending this to the administration. I have called all week. My, my trash over in my district, my leaves haven't been picked up yet. I called them Tuesday, I called them yesterday, they said they were behind. I've been riding through my district, they have not picked up the trash, the leaves, or the special pickup. So if you can get on there, please, I appreciate it. I mean, paying your taxes, and residents come up to me, and we can't even get our leaves picked up. What is going on with GFL? Now, I talked to them personally. I even left a message here on City Hall, that, you know, the trash. I finally just pulled mine back to the backyard yesterday evening. This is unacceptable. We paying these people, what are they doing? The whole District Five, I drove through yesterday just looking, I don't know what happened. They stayed, they stayed, they were behind, but that's not, I mean, one day, okay, that was excusable. Today is Thursday, so that means they're not going to make it this week. So I wish you would send me an email at some point and let me know what they stated. What is, what is the problem? What's going on with GFL? Thanks to all the candidates, and Mr. Sean, Mr. Sean Preston, you're always a winner. Just remember that. I didn't win the first time either, but now, you know, people know who you are, who you are, and you're genuine, so keep it, keep it going. And Perry Earl and all you guys out there, I appreciate you. You are a new generation. I look forward to sitting out here and looking at you one day, all of you. Thank you.
All right. Counselwoman Taylor Burke?
President, before I do anything else, I want to remind whoever is supposed to take care of the, of Oak Hill, I want it done, and I want it done now, because it looks horrible over there, and it's unfair to the families that have, to our loved ones over there right now. I think it's ridiculous. The city should be ashamed of themselves to have something like that over there where people, loved ones, are asleep. And, Mr. Perry Earl, you know, congratulations to all of you young people. I'm very proud of the young people that have stepped up and decided to get involved. That's very, I, I, I'm very, I was happy to do that, and your, your day is coming too. Don't worry about it, okay? Have a good one. Thank you.
All right. Counselwoman Waterman?
Good afternoon. I just want to say to everybody who put themselves out on Tuesday to do what they thought was best for the city, kudos to you. Until you're young and upcoming, know that I'll always be here for you. I'm stepping down, but I ain't stepping out. So just know, you give me a call, majority of you have my number, and you know where I'm at, and I'll be there for you, but I just want you to make sure that your agendas are correct, because this is all about the city of Pontiac. It's not about an "I," it's about a "we," and it's about what we can do to move this city forward. And as I stated before, thank you for stepping out, for doing what you, God has best, and for running some wonderful races and campaigns. God bless you all.
All right. Did everybody speak? All right. Good evening, everybody. Well, good afternoon, well, we're afternoon now. So, first of all, I want to commend the clerk's office and all the citizens of Pontiac who got out and voted on Tuesday. This was probably one of the most pleasant elections I have ever seen in the city of Pontiac, so I just want to commend all the candidates for working together, and the people who came out and voted. We're voting, voting, being so important. You know that our voting rights are under attack in the state of Michigan. So Monday at eleven AM, right here outside of this building, we are having a rally at eleven o'clock. Everybody is invited. If you care about your right to vote, please be here at eleven o'clock. I'm inviting everybody who's running, not running, who used to run, who want to run, and people who running for their life, to be here at eleven o'clock. They just had a rally in Grand Rapids. Pontiac is also a place that they're having this, and then they're going to have another one in Detroit the day following. So Pontiac, please show up in the place. A lot of nonprofits are putting this together, so eleven o'clock at the Bowen Center, be here, it's going to be about forty-five minutes, so you can take it on your lunch and then come out, but it's important that people show up outside eleven o'clock on Monday, August the ninth, especially our seasoned citizens, who really know what it is to not be able to vote. know what it is to not be able to vote, uh, and they're trying to take us back to that place, so with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at one thirty-two.